CJ, ¿puedes encender la TV para nosotros? Estamos listos.
Eso es lo que estaba esperando. Entonces estamos bien ahora.
Bien.
Buenas noches. Quisiera llamar a ordenar la reunión regular de la Junta de Educación de New Canaan este lunes, 3 de noviembre de 2025. Por favor, todos están en sus piezas para el pliego de la lealtad. Me gusta. Ustedes nos están manteniendo a buen ritmo. Eso fue bueno. Tenemos que practicar más, creo. Eso fue excelente.
Sí, lo hacen todos los días.
Eso es genial. Así que, siguiente, quiero hacer una motion para aprobar la agenda para el 3 de noviembre de 2025. Brendan, segundo, Phil, todos en favor. Excelente. Y si puedo hacer una motion, por favor, para aprobar los minutos de nuestra última reunión de octubre 20 de 2025. Brendan, segundo, Matt Campbell, todos en favor. Excelente. Ahora, tenemos un espectáculo muy emocionante.
Estoy emocionado para presentar a Lauren Sherwood, quien está aquí con algunos de nuestros estudiantes que estarán actuando este fin de semana en Aladdin Junior. Lauren.
Gracias a todos por vernos. Estamos muy emocionados por nuestra abertura esta semana. Así que lo que vamos a hacer es que voy a traer a todos los niños y les daré su nombre y qué roles están jugando. Así que por favor, vayan aquí y se reanjen. Así que esta es nuestra audiencia, Samia. Genial, genial. Bien, entonces, vayan hacia arriba.
¿Pueden darle el dinero?
Hola, soy Emily y juego Jasmine.
Hola, soy Ellie y juego Omar.
Mi nombre es Paige y juego Kasim.
Hola, soy Neha y juego Aladdin.
Yo soy Teddy y también juego Aladdin.
Y yo soy Mia y juego Babkak.
Genial. Así que tenemos cuatro Aladdins y tres Jasminas y tres Omars, Babkaks y Kasims. Así que esto es solo uno de los números que hacemos en el programa y vamos a hacer un pequeño escenario justo antes de eso. Así que Teddy, ¿por qué no vengan aquí conmigo? Y el resto de ustedes, ese es el lado derecho, ese es el lado izquierdo. Y aquí vamos.
Es simple. Nos reunimos, cantamos, bailamos, ponemos el show. ¿Y luego nos dan dinero?
Solo nos dan el dinero. No tenemos que sacarlos de sus bolsillos o explotarlos o nada.
Te dije que íbamos a cambiar de nuevo. Vamos a ganar nuestro dinero.
No sé. La gente paga para ver a otras personas cantar y bailar. ¿Quién hace eso?
Puede ser emocionante obtener un poco de atención positiva de nosotros.
¿Eccitante? Performir como monjes bailando por la pista. Es vergonzoso. Es degradado.
Podemos cantar.
¡Es hora de la fiesta! Cinco, seis, siete, ocho.
Dos amigos, no polis, Mia, micro y...
Babkak, Omar.
Cuatro amigos, más cerca, sí.
¡Hé, no, señor!
No tenemos permiso.
Los amigos están en el centro de la ciudad.
Los caballos están en el árbol.
Están ahí, ahí.
Como gryffy.
Babkak, Omar.
Los botes, no better, no one, no better.
No hay nada en el exceso.
No digan que no, no, no.
No, no, no.
Digan, tope, no, no.
Los amigos están en el centro de la ciudad.
Los amigos están en el centro de la ciudad.
Oh, el amor, el amor.
¡El amor!
Babkak, Omar.
¡Ahí está, ahí!
¡Ay, Dios, no!
¡Babkak, Omar!
Bien, entonces, hay uno más número que queríamos mostrarles y ese es Proud of Your Boy. Así que los padres de Aladdin han ido, pero quiere hacerlos orgullosos. Así que este es un momento después del mercado donde decide cambiar de nuevo.
Con esa mierda, no lo compraría si solo se fijaran más. ¿Vendrían a ver a un niño pobre, no serio? Se averdan, hay mucho más en mí.
Voy a convertirme en alguien, mamá. No sé cómo exactamente, pero lo haré.
Proud of your boy. Te haré orgullo de tu hijo. Confía en mí, tan rápido como he sido. Estás en una sorpresa placentera. He perdido tiempo, he perdido mí.
Así que digo que soy lento para mi edad, un lúmero temprano. Bien, estoy de acuerdo. Pero pronto o pronto te haré orgullo de tu hijo. Aunque no puedo hacerme mayor o más o más o más o más. He hecho todo lo mejor, ¿qué más puedo hacer? Desde que no nací perfecto como papá o tú, mamá. Trataré, trataré para hacerte orgullo de tu hijo.
¡Hola, América! ¡Díganme sus tickets!
Eso fue increíble. Muchas gracias. Fue genial. Ya tengo mis tickets. Estaré allí el jueves, así que no puedo esperar a ver el show entero. Ustedes eran increíbles. Qué bonito regalo para empezar nuestra semana. No, gracias. Bien. Ustedes no tienen que sentarse y ver, a menos que realmente quieran. Tengan una gran noche.
Gracias.
Ellos tienen que ir a la escuela mañana, así que tienen lugares.
Eso es correcto. Bien. Sí, fue genial. Así que ahora tenemos comentarios del público. Para asegurar que el público esté derecho a ser escuchado, el board estableció tiempo durante la reunión para comentarios públicos. Dos minutos se le asignan a cada orador con un máximo de 15 minutos en cada tema. ¿Quiere alguien acercarse al board, por favor? Genial.
Les dije a la junta de finanzas y al jefe de la casa. Le dije la copia a todos, pero Brian dijo que no podía, pero su fe y su necesidad se la dieron después de la reunión. Eso es todo.
Bien, gracias.
Gracias, Richard.
Gracias.
Es el dato de libertad de información que no tenemos el board, pero podrían leerlo.
Buenas noches. Ese fue un acto increíblemente difícil de hacer.
Sí.
Jennifer Delebi. Vivo en 70 White Oak Shade Lane en New Canaan. Y juré que solía hacer esto mucho y nunca es más fácil. Así que escribí esto muy rápidamente en camino aquí. Tengo a un 8º Margot y tengo a un junior en la escuela secundaria ahora. Comenzaron, bueno, 13 años atrás. Estábamos aquí, así que he pasado por el sistema escolar. Así que aquí voy en mis dos minutos. Prometo. Trato y hablaré muy rápido. Somos increíblemente bendecidos por tener el sistema escolar líder en el estado, en nuestra ciudad, así como uno de los centros primarios en este país. Y mis hijos han beneficiado específicamente de la privacidad de poder asistir. Están excelentes con realmente poca participación de mí o mi esposo. Han crecido en estudiantes confidentes, trabajadores duraderos, diligentes. Y me gustaría tomar el crédito, pero verdaderamente creo que la parte de la leche pertenece a la comunidad escolar de educadores, consejeros, amos y líderes. Han invertido tiempo en el éxito de mis hijos. La privacidad de estar en la estructura de clase que permite a los educadores tailar su aprendizaje donde están. Es inusual en un sistema escolar público. Mientras que ambos están excelentes, son estudiantes diferentes. Es verdaderamente lo que veo como una privacidad de estar en una ciudad como New Canaan donde enfocamos primero y sobre todo nuestros estudiantes. Améramos cada año en la escuela secundaria cuando nos preguntaban nuestros objetivos para el año siguiente y cada año teníamos el mismo objetivo: hacer que nuestros hijos amen el aprendizaje, punto. Y lo hacen, bueno, principalmente. Eso, nuevamente, es una privacidad. Presidente de una empresa que trabajaba en el espacio CPG donde teníamos las principales marcas diría: odio ser el equipo que pierde ese lugar de primera categoría. Asegúrate de enfocarte en donde necesites, en las cosas tangibles que van a mantener ese lugar. Pierdes esa posición cuando te distraes un poco. Cuando reflexiono sobre algunos de los debates recientes, miro todavía en los lados el mensaje que se habla en público o detrás de puertas durante esta elección de la próxima, me preocupa que tal vez en el board, y prometo que seré muy rápido, que hemos perdido un poco de ese enfoque.
Ha sido dos minutos.
Bien, voy a terminar esto. Es una privacidad tener el elegir en la escuela secundaria de tus clases, una privacidad de clubs, una privacidad de lo que leen. Tenemos muchas opciones. Una privacidad de acceso a la comunidad escolar como padres y estudiantes. Noten la privacidad, el derecho que tenemos como padres, y voy dejando, es elegir dónde colocar a nuestros hijos en la escuela. Noten la diferencia.
¿Pueden terminar?
Sí, estoy, estoy, estoy saliendo.
Ha sido más de dos minutos ahora.
Lo prometo, voy. Este board va a cambiar, este equipo va a cambiar después de las elecciones de mañana y le pregunto: si no estás aquí, primero y sobre todo, para los niños y cosas tangibles como laptops y cuánto pesan o tamaño de clase y no en las cosas que son un poco esotéricas y muy difíciles de definir, por favor, repensen por qué este board importa tanto. Tiene que ser tangible. Me preocupa que hemos perdido ese enfoque. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más? Bien. siguientes informes, informes y temas de acción. Tenemos nuestro reporte de enmiendas y utilización de personal en la escuela secundaria con la señora Pianca.
Buenas noches. Lo cerré antes. Buenas noches a todos. Y gracias por la oportunidad de nuevo este año de presentar algunas información importante para ustedes sobre nuestro personal de la escuela secundaria y enmiendas para este y para los próximos años. Me gustaría comenzar mencionando que esto es una colección voluminosa de información y me arrepentiría si no comenzara agradeciendo a todos los miembros del gabinete y Dr. Lutzi así como a todos los administradores de la escuela y líderes de profesores que han revisado toda esta información varias veces para asegurar que es en realidad exacto. Esto no podría haber ocurrido sin todo ese trabajo siendo hecho, así que gracias a todos. También debe ser notado que todos estos informes son publicados en el sitio web del distrito. Si no lo son ahora, deberían ser en breve. Y para hacer este trabajo y poner esta información juntos, como recuerdan de la semana pasada, compilamos una cantidad considerable de datos, como acabo de decir, de una variedad de diferentes fuentes en cuatro informes y eso es lo que vamos a hablar sobre después. Y así, tienen paquetes en frente de ustedes si no trajeron paquetes que enviamos a ustedes el jueves. Y en esos paquetes están un par de documentos diferentes, solo para que ustedes sepan qué son. El primero es este documento que se llama Memorando sobre Enmiendas y Proyecciones. Este documento analiza bastante toda la información y los informes que han sido proporcionados por nuestros demógrafos y basado en enmiendas pasadas, presentadas y proyectadas en nuestro distrito escolar. También incluido en esto son los gráficos y gráficos de los demógrafos que muestran la enmienda histórica de la escuela y la proyección de la enmienda. El siguiente documento en frente de ustedes, que es el negro y blanco. Espera un segundo. Sí. ¿Dónde está mi, mi reporte de enmiendas blancas? De todos modos, siguiente documento, Reporte de Utilización y Enmienda, que es el negro y blanco. Muestra esto. Y este es un mirar comprensivo de nuestro personal certificado para el 25-26 de este año, eso es hasta el 1 de octubre. Y incluye datos de enmienda, algunos datos de personal con FTEs para todos los diferentes niveles incluyendo secciones, tamaños de clase para cada grado, información sobre posiciones de liderazgo de la facultad, administración y los totales de los niveles. También tiene una variedad de fuentes de información y sirve como referencia estándar durante el año. Probablemente usarán este documento y verán que lo usamos definitivamente durante la temporada presupuestaria. Informa todo lo que hacemos. También hay un reporte de utilización de personal separado, el rojo. Este es el número de personal no certificado en cada escuela. Así que estos son casi todos excepto profesores y personal certificado y administradores. Y luego también hay el Reporte de Análisis Suplementarias, que muestra esto. Y esto proporciona algunos perspectivos adicionales sobre el propio dato que están en el Reporte de Utilización. Un comparativo FTE de este año con el de anoche también está en ahí. Y eso se hace en cada nivel por departamento y también un mirar en qué clases pueden estar bajo las guías del distrito y qué están sobretodo y un mirar en la enmienda y programas de educación especial también. Así que esos son los documentos. Ahora vamos a ver el entero distrito escolar y solo para que ustedes sepan que debido al dato presentado de tantos, de varios puntos de vista y perspectivas incluidos los diferentes niveles del sistema por grados, grados específicos, algunos de los niveles y no de los niveles de área principal, información de clases y secciones, como dije. Esta noche voy a enfocarme en una revisión del enmienda actual de los estudiantes. Nuestros niveles de personal educador, como dije, hasta el 1 de octubre y nuestros demógrafos NEDEX enmiendas para ustedes. El enfoque de esta noche es básicamente, al enfocarse en esto, tendrán un clearerísimo resorte de dónde estamos estadísticamente, dónde estábamos hasta el 1 de octubre de 2025 y también les dará una idea de dónde podríamos ir en el futuro. Y como cualquier presentación, el dato que está en todos estos informes es realmente detallado, como pueden ver. Nuestro reporte hoy realmente te da una visión general de los datos básicos. Así que vamos a tener una perspectiva del distrito escolar primero. Así que para el 25-26 de este año, cuando agregamos el K-12 de enmienda, el programa de pre-K y estudiantes que están fuera de lugar, actualmente llegamos al total de la enmienda del distrito de 4,023 niños y ese es el número de estudiantes comparado con 4,062 o 39 menos que el total de la semana anterior. Solo para su información, los enmiendas de pre-K, la historia de esos enmiendas durante los últimos cinco o seis años, solo para que puedan recordar, ha estado en algún rango de 50, 50, 49, 52, 54, desde 2021. Y este año estamos en 56 y esas clases de preescolar son, como hemos discutido aquí antes, típicamente un ratio de 50-50 de compañeros típicos con estudiantes que se identifican como teniendo necesidades especiales y actualmente tenemos cinco de esas clases. Durante los últimos años, la población ha crecido y anticipo de mi colega y el feedback que me ha dado que ese crecimiento probablemente continuará. Mirando nuestra enmienda histórica de la escuela utilizando nuestro enmienda de pre-K a 12 de este año, 4,009, 10 años atrás en 2015, 2016, había en total 208 estudiantes más de 4,217. Eso es para cada nivel. Ahora podemos ver cada nivel, en el nivel secundario para este año. Como escribí en el Memorando sobre Enmiendas y Proyecciones, nuestro enmienda general está un poco más alto de la proyección de los demógrafos. Este año, nuestro kindergarten entró en 288, que fueron 23 estudiantes más alto de la proyección y 16 más alto del año pasado, que fueron 272 estudiantes. Hablamos de esto anoche. Probablemente recuerden que se introdujo nueva legislación en términos de cuándo es el límite de cierre para los estudiantes de kindergarten. Y afectó nuestros números de kindergarten, ya que algunos estudiantes permanecieron en pre-K previamente que podrían haberse mudado a kindergarten. En general, nuestra enmienda secundaria aumentó 17 estudiantes, grado K a 4, en total. Y aquí hay una breakdown más por cada de las escuelas secundarias. Así que tenemos nuestros tres escuelas secundarias aquí y este lado muestra un aumento de 11 estudiantes, este lado un aumento de 12 para este año y este lado muestra seis menos estudiantes que el año pasado. En el monitor de nuestra enmienda en este nivel, como todos saben, es realmente importante en el futuro. Actualmente, solo para que estén al tanto, tenemos 30 salas en este lado, 26 en este lado y 28, incluyendo los cinco pre-K en la escuela occidental. Tenemos 79 secciones de grado K a 4 este año, que es un decreto de una sección de la semana pasada. Ningún cambio en este lado, ningún cambio en la sección hacia sur y el sur disminuyó por una sección basado en la enmienda. Mirando a Saks, la enmienda de Saks tuvo un decreto este año de 1,273 a 1,221, que es un decreto de 52 niños. NEDEX proyecta la enmienda a decreto el próximo año a 1,206, que es un diferencia de 15 niños. Y el demógrafo proyecta la enmienda en Saks a incrementar a 1,226 estudiantes en el 27-28 de este año. Y incluso con algunos decretes proyectados en Saks, permanecerá en el rango de 1,200 de estudiantes durante los próximos tres a cuatro años. Y solo para su información, los números de dormitorio en Saks, grado 5 tiene 14, grados, grado 6 tiene 16 y grados 7 y 8 también tienen 16 dormitorios. En la escuela secundaria, este año la enmienda es 1,257 y se proyecta a decreto el próximo año, según NEDEX, por 30 estudiantes a 1,227. La enmienda de la escuela secundaria de New Canaan se proyecta a decreto a un anticipado 1,133 durante el 20-30, 31 de este año, cinco años de ahora, que es un decreto de 124 niños. En términos de educación especial, nuestra población de estudiantes K a 12 ha disminuido este año por ocho estudiantes. La tasa de prevalencia este año de 13% es la misma que el año pasado. Gracias, Bill. Nuestros desplazamientos fuera de la escuela son 14 este año y eso es cuatro menos que el año pasado, lo que fue el número total de 18. Hay información realmente específica sobre este área que pueden encontrar en los análisis suplementarios de la Reporte de Utilización y Enmienda. Nuestra tasa de prevalencia en educación especial durante los últimos siete o ocho años ha variado alrededor del 12% durante los últimos tres años. Ha permanecido establecida en 13%. Un mirar a las guías de tamaño de clase y dónde estamos con eso en términos de la enmienda. En, en mirar eso, este gráfico muestra que durante el año el porcentaje de clases en general en el distrito para este año que están en o debajo de las guías del board es realmente alto. En la, en la página 1 del Reporte de Utilización y Enmienda del personal, verán las guías de tamaño de clase para clases K a 3 son 16 a 20. Y mostrado aquí en el gráfico es que en el nivel secundario el porcentaje de clases en o debajo de las guías es 100% con no clases por encima de las guías. Las guías para grados 4 a 8, como probablemente sepan, son 20 a 24. Y Saks muestra muchas secciones bajo las guías debido a la estructura del programa de equipo. Ha sido siempre así. Así como los desplazamientos de matemáticas. Hay algunas clases de matemáticas más pequeñas. Y este, este gráfico muestra Saks en 99.4% dentro de las guías de tamaño de clase. Así que estamos haciendo muy bien ahí también. Para nuestra escuela secundaria, grados 9 a 12, las guías son 14 a 25 estudiantes por sección y el 99.9% de las clases en la escuela secundaria están dentro de las guías de tamaño de clase. Así que en general, el porcentaje de clases en o debajo de las guías ha permanecido bien en el rango del 90%, el rango alto del 90% en promedio. Y ha sido relativamente consistente durante los últimos cinco años, algunos que bajaron al 99%, pero bastante cerca. Así que ahora miramos el personal, personal certificado. Como pueden ver, el número de personal certificado en total en el distrito disminuyó por 2.56 FTEs y les explicaré dónde fue y cómo se ve. En términos de la parte secundaria, en este nivel, el personal secundario en general actualmente está en 127.1, que es baja de la suma de la año pasado de 127.2, que es un decreto neto de 0.10. Así que en el nivel secundario, la adición del entrenador de la sala, el 1.0 para eso, y también algunos ajustes que se hicieron en cada edificio y cambios menores en áreas especiales como música y biblioteca y PE, cuentan por la diferencia en el balance de los FTEs. Son diferentes en cada edificio, pero el entrenador, ya saben, un tercio de eso en cada edificio. En el nivel secundario, en Saks, el personal de Saks muestra un decreto de 3.90 FTEs y el personal de la escuela secundaria de New Canaan muestra un decreto de 0.5 FTEs. Y en Saks, esos FTEs fueron, como están al tanto, totales y balanceados con algunas decisiones basadas en la enmienda sobre profesores de grado 5 y también en los ámbitos de lengua mundial y PE y arte, ajustes que fueron basados en la enmienda. En la escuela secundaria de New Canaan, veamos, el 1.0 de la intervención de matemáticas que agregamos en el presupuesto de la semana pasada está incluido y es offsetado por algunos ajustes en los ámbitos de la educación tecnológica, música... some, uh, adjustments in the areas of tech ed, music, uh, PE, business, um, and also a piece of an FTE for, um, the NIASC accreditation study. Um, but all of the adjustments, uh, were based in, uh, teaching staff and special areas, decisions that were made around enrollment. Uh, a look at special ed staffing, a net change of an addition of point nine-four FTEs. Um, and the balance out of that, uh, is based on the addition of the literacy academy piece of a position, um, and some social work, and then enrollment-based, um, uh, lessening of an FTE in the area of speech and language. Uh, back to enrollment, uh, and a look at NESDEC's projections. The, the projection of the demographer estimates that the district as a whole, um, is going to increase in enrollment, uh, for the short term by a hundred and nine kids from three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three to four thousand sixty-two. And if you look at each level, uh, they project, uh, project an increase of a hundred fifty-four students at the elementary level alone. And, uh, pre-K enrollment figures aren't included in these particular numbers. On the secondary level, uh, the demographer projects a decrease in enrollment of fifteen kids. Next year at Saks, from one thousand two hundred and twenty-one to one thousand two hundred and six. Uh, they project the high school to decrease by thirty students to one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven next year from one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven this year. Um, we wanted to, um, an important enrollment focus for us, clearly, is in the kindergarten projections and our future planning around that. Uh, we wanted to share with the board some of the history in regards to the kindergarten projections accuracy. Um, as you can see from the last ten years or so, the projected enrollment actual numbers, um, and differences. The projections are based on the live birth numbers, um, in New Canaan, and a formula is applied to that number to include, um, kids that move into the school district as well as children who are attending preschools outside of the town of New Canaan. Um, although there's a, a historical variability, uh, the average total of the NESDEC projections percentage-wise is somewhere around one-point-two percent. So it's, it's been a pretty close estimate. Um, and just for your information, and you probably already know this, um, we're making every attempt to get as much information as soon as possible uh, around our kindergarten enrollment. We've already, um, begun to do that, uh, at our, uh, at the time of our Halloween celebrations in all of the schools. Um, and putting it out there publicly to the community that if you're thinking about enrolling your child, it would be really helpful for you to do that as soon as possible. Um, and we did see some enrollments over the course of the last couple of days that weren't there previously. Uh, in addition to that, Dr. Corente also is, uh, in communication with the preschools in town. She typically does that every year around taking a look at the actual numbers of those children who are currently in preschools, who probably anticipate, if they're living in New Canaan, um, coming to our schools. Um, so we're doing our very best to get, uh, estimates that we're hoping are accurate and also to put it out there publicly so we can have as many enrollment, uh, specifics as early as possible. Just to kind of summarize all of the information I just gave you, um, important to note that NESDEC's enrollment projection totals from the fall of twenty-twenty-four data came within ten students, uh, of the actual grade K through twelve enrollment total for October of twenty-twenty-five. So there were three thousand nine hundred and forty-three projected, and our actuals were three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three, which is, um, actually point two-five, less than one percent accuracy. Um, the, and I remember saying this last year, the, the factors that we now have to continue to consider um, that have the biggest impact on our future enrollments are the in-migration into the town, which is hard to predict, um, but it seems like we're on an upward trend in general. Um, and then the number of, uh, live births in town. Um, and we, uh, get and keep all of that information in historical, uh, data. Uh, the elementary school class sizes are within guidelines is an important point to make. We've, we focused very hard on our programs and our class sizes, and they all have remained intact, thanks to you, with balanced sections, uh, for the short term, and I'm assuming that would be a continued goal. Um, our Saks enrollment, uh, is projected to stay the same, as I said earlier on, somewhere in the range of twelve-hundred for the next four to five years, um, which is good, consistent news. And, uh, NESDEC projects that our enrollment from our current three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three to four thousand sixty-two in the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as an increase of two-point-eight percent. According to the projections that we have, we are definitely entering a period of increased elementary uh, enrollment for the next couple of years. No news to anyone here. Um, and the projections also tell us that there's a significant jump in kindergarten enrollment, um, of a hundred and twenty-nine additional students in, uh, next school year. And then, uh, a higher-than-usual kindergarten enrollment, uh, for quite some time to come, um, when the projections end in twenty-thirty-four. Sounds so far away. Um, and so important for us to continue to consider all of these facts and the decisions that we make moving forward around what our schools look like, um, and how they're designed. Thank you so much. I know that was a lot of information. Um, hopefully you'll have some time to look through all of it and analyze, understand. Uh, as I said earlier, as you all know, this is the, all this information is the basis for, uh, our upcoming budget season, which probably begins tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Campbell?
Uh, thank you, Darlene. Appreciate this. Um, so you had mentioned that you'd begun some outreach about the kindergarten enrollment that's coming up, right? And sort of for other, what, what is, but you didn't mention what results it's yielded so far and where, how are we trending versus where we are last year? I mean, what's, what's the projection? I mean, a hundred, an additional hundred and twenty-nine students in kindergarten is, despite the jump.
So, as of today, we have, um, twenty-three pending regi- registrations, fourteen registered, sixty-four registrations requested, uh, for a grand total of a hundred and one registrations so far.
And what, what would that compare to a normal year about this time?
You know, Jill and I were talking about that at lunch this morning. Um, and one of the things I said was, it sounds like we didn't start keeping this information as early. So I don't know that it would be apples to apples. Maybe in another month and a half, when the real pre-registration floodgate opens, at that point, we could say to you, we've got a hundred more. Um, I just don't know that today because it's just been opened up three or four days ago.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's earlier than we've ever done it, so there's no comp that way. But to be at a hundred right now does have us a little bit nervous. Because that's, those are numbers we generally see in January when we're doing our orientation.
Which also anticipated the outreach, right? So...
We did, yeah. And we did similar outreach to what we've done in years past, so it could be, if, if we continually pick up fifteen, twenty kids a week over the next few weeks, that'll be a sign. If it plateaus where it is and stays steady, that'll be another sign.
But we do look at the numbers now every week.
Mm-hmm, okay. No, perfect. I mean, there's, obviously, there's a lot of, uh, immigration triggered by COVID, right? And, and sort of we're seeing those, we're seeing those kids.
If you, uh, look at the history of, um, lot, the live births, and you don't have this, but, um, I was interested, so, uh, on, on the slide that says kindergarten projected enrollments, what, what I also wanted to think about was the comparison between the live births for a year, and then how many kids actually came. Um, it's typically, uh, almost twice as many students and has been for the last ten years. Um, and Dr. Lutze explained the formula to me that is used for, um, coming to those numbers.
But I guess what I'm saying is that, and I see that on page four of this other data, is that historically, if you just think, you know, just what social, you know, what, what we've seen in, in migration into the suburbs, right, is that most people could have their children, for example, I think many of us, in the city or other places, then you move here when it's time to come to school, whereas COVID anticipated those moves into New Canaan. And so you had more live births, so I don't know if, I don't know if it translates perfectly, because you probably had more live births in a post-COVID era than you did previously, as it relates to live births compared to actual enrollment, right? So we probably had more people moving and being born here.
I'm sure that's true because in actuality, like, say for two thousand nineteen, there were a hundred and forty-four live births in New Canaan. Um, and I know this is apples to oranges, but, uh, all of the numbers are in probably the mid-one-forties to one-fifty range for ten years.
Mm-hmm.
And all of the actuals are three hundred and two, two hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and seventy-three, two hundred and seventy-seven. They are much higher numbers in terms of the comparison between live births and in actuality, how many kids actually came.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
There's a big difference.
So the, right, the big unknown is, we, I, I agree, I think that is, that assumption's gonna hold, that we had families move up into town, maybe years before they would have without the pandemic, maybe before they started their families, right? So maybe they moved into town instead of staying in the city for another five, six years and started their families there. Then after, as the pandemic sort of wound down, that in-migration then did it pick back up to close to where it would have been otherwise, which then would be that, those additional births. That, that's, what happened next is gonna be the big question. When you look at the, it's actually on page four of the district enrollment piece, you've got the projected enrollment, and, actually, if you just start, sorry, I hope you don't mind, but if you just start with page two, it'll show you the just, the, because the difference is pretty striking. If you look at page two in that packet, that's the historical. And it goes all the way back to twenty-ten, as Dart's saying. So if you read down the births column, starting with twenty-ten, what you see is the highest number there is one-seventy-four. Right? So you go through one-forty-two, one-seventy-four, one-forty-two, one-forty-five. Again, this is all a his- a historical look. And then five years later, so in twenty-ten, a hundred and forty-two births turned into two hundred and eighty-five kindergartners. Right? So that's the way you read that. The birth year, twenty-eleven, there were a hundred and seventy-four births, and that yielded two hundred and seventy-three kindergartners five, five years later. But the, so you see where those numbers hover, and they really do, it's about one-forty-five average, give or take. So now, if you flip to page four, does the projected, so you have this year, we do twenty-twenty births, where a hundred, uh, the year twenty-twenty, it was a hundred and thirty-seven births, which turned into two hundred and eighty-eight kindergartners this school year. Right? So that's five years ago, and that's a look back. Now, if you look down that births column, starting next year, you see two-fifteen, one-ninety, two-fourteen. You know, those numbers are fifty kids more, give or take, than, than the average from ten years ago, from that trend. So the question, really, that would be unknown, that we won't know until the kids actually walk through the door, is what is that ratio going to be, starting from a two-fifteen base versus a one-forty-five base, right? The, I think one of the signs this is telling me is those two-fifteen births are probably the older kids in the families. And that because the, we also know the twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-three births. And even the twenty-twenty-four, like, those are pretty close, probably, to the, what the actuals will be. You know, those kids are born, and they're still being registered, whatever, so while they have the, you know, uh, they're not entirely sure, and they, they will tweak a little bit. We've been following this two-fifteen number for five years, and it really hasn't moved all that much. So we feel pretty confident that those other numbers are pretty close, and they're all higher, so... Again, that supports the premise, maybe people moved up early and started having families instead of moving in with families, already begun with children, but what are those other families with children already also moving into town?
Yeah, and it changes the ra- the, the historical relationship between live births and actual enrollment, right? So we have a fifty additional live births, doesn't necessarily translate into a hundred and fifty additional kindergarten enrollments, right?
Right, that's that ratio.
Something in between, and so that's the, sort of, that's the inflection point that I see in the data is this upcoming, this upcoming kindergarten class, because if that holds true, and we assume that continues, well, yeah, you would have an enrollment problem. Otherwise, we've just anticipated, we've pulled forward some of that previous enrollment, and we're, we're likely to normalize. Because as I think about this, just sort of, you know, nationally even, and looking at the data previously that you, that you went over, Darlene, um, we had declining enrollment, right? Especially, we see it in Saks quite a bit and throughout the district. And then, obviously, I think there's a pull forward, and there's sort of, obviously, demographic shifts during, during COVID that created this, this, what could be a temporary bump. But then, if I couple that with sort of just demographic data nationally, we think about fertility rates and how they've been declining, right? It just doesn't, it just doesn't really foot with these, especially these out-year projections, right? I mean, it, it seems like it's more likely this is a temporary blip than anything, driven by the pandemic. And then, if you couple that again with additional data, that's more local data about even just housing inventory, right? I mean, just, I mean, where are these people coming from, right? If they're not moving here because there are houses for sale. And so there's a lot that suggests that there's just a lot of noise, there's a lot of COVID noise in this data from the, the demographers, that it, there's a lot of uncertainty, and obviously, we're using this data not only for, for budget, but also as we think about capital projects in the future. It just seems like it's so, it, there's so much uncertainty, so many variables in, 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 in the data that it's not useful to make, certainly for next year's budget, but as we think about longer-term capital projects, right, to depend on this trend continuing pretty strongly, it just seems like it's too early to tell. That's my point.
Yeah, the challenge will be, of course,
We're already behind anyway.
Until you're in it, you don't know it for sure. But I think that, you know, we, we have had other projections from other demographers, and we've, I've reached out even as recently as last week to somebody else to send them all the information, said, please, run a new set of assumptions, you know, and look at this. Uh, and really, what I, I would anticipate is probably four-seventeen is too high, and probably two-eighty-five is too low. And it's going to be somewhere, you know, I know that's, that's a huge range, at zero to a thousand, but the, um, bottom line is, you know, we, well, we won't know exactly, but, so we'll have to plan a couple of different, different options and scenarios. And we've, we've even been talking about the budget, what that might look like, and how we might be able to bring that forward in a way that, uh, is flexible, right, as we look at what's, what is it, what is a, uh, what do sections cost? What do we have to build those things out? So we're working through, so that it works for the board and for the community and everybody to understand. It would be foolhardy to say, this is the number, and we're going to just plan around this. Um, but I think it'd be equally bad to say, it's not gonna hit there, no way, we're not even gonna think about it. So we're, we're caught in that spot. It's, if, I do want to, just very quickly, for anyone around the birth, for what it's worth, on page nine, it shows you that relationship. And just for the, the visuals, and actually, as you, if you'll recall, last year's kindergarten projection was a little bit lower for twenty-six, twenty-seven than this one. And this sort of tells you, helps you understand why. Because, so the blue line along the bottom is the, the actual births. Uh, and those are, so the very first one on the far left is the number of births in twenty-ten. And then the line above, the K enrollment, is the five-year-later kindergarten enrollment, right? So that's your birth-to-K ratio visually, that you could see. And what happened this year, and as you look all the way to the right, twenty-twenty births were that, you know, one-forty-eight, around wherever that was. Uh, but look at how the, so that was less than the year before, but look at how the enrollment went up. So what happened there, because they missed that by twenty-some-odd kids, that recounts the fa- the factor. So this year went from four-eleven, whatever it was, up to that four-seventeen, because it does get recalculated every year, which is why the, the chart that Darlene showed before is important. Because they don't just set a formula and leave it. Each year, as they, as, if they hit the mark, it stays the same. You know, if they come in, we come in over their projections, then that factor will go up. We come in under, that factor goes down, so it, it is a, a dynamic, um, birth-to-K factor that they work to use. And we have these data that go back forty years, you know, so you can actually really see this consistency of the birth-to-K, but we also haven't gone through a pandemic, right? So that's the question that we keep trying to, to work through and understand. Um, it's, it's gonna put stress on the system. I mean, anything significantly north of three hundred kids in kindergarten, uh, especially if that stays that way over a couple of years, as the projections seem to say, um, is going to put a lot of stress on the system, not just capacity, but budget and other things for staffing, materials, space, uh, furniture, everything that goes into that. And that's why we're watching it so carefully.
All right, so Brendan, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, um, one question I had is, I'm thinking back to maybe like nine years ago, when K through four, and I'm looking at page two of the NESDEC projections, um, we had like roughly fifteen-fifty or sixteen-hundred kids, K through four. 15, 50 or 1600 kids, A through four. And we had, I think we had to take over some, you know, art classrooms or at the elementary schools. So I guess my question is, is that still the case, where, you know, 1500, 1600 kids kind of were then having to shift some classrooms to, you know, regular classrooms?
Yeah, the three elementaries are designed to run optimally at a max capacity of 28 sections, right? So then, because it really is about sections more than numbers of kids, you may have noticed in the Sac, in the South numbers this year, there are actually more kids at South this year than last year, but one fewer section, right? So it's where they're distributed. So at 28 sections, that's really full program capacity at our elementaries, meaning we have our second science classroom as we need for that program, we have our art rooms, our music rooms and otherwise. When you go over that, you have to start making those decisions. So back, when we look back at these numbers, we did, we lost those second science classrooms. I, I think East right now is a good example. So East is at 30 right now, 30 sections. So we don't have that second science classroom, so science is taught in, in the classroom where the kids are throughout the day, instead of at, in the, in that science classroom that's designed for the space. And we had to, we split a music room in half, so that, for the orchestra chorus band, and then band is being taught as a whole thing on the stage in the caf. So it has, it has had program impacts. If we had to continue, then we would start looking at art classrooms, and does art go on a cart, and what else do we, do we have to do? Each decision does impact program, and we try to figure out how to minimize that impact. So I would say, yeah, at this, I can't say for sure, because I don't know the distribution in grade and schools, but once we go over 28 sections, which really is about 500 to 525 kids, depending, then we have to, we start making those decisions. So whether it's at any one of the schools. And there was a year over at South where one of the grade levels had seven sections, and it, just like 28 is that sort of max number programmatically, six per grade level is the number of sections that works best programmatically. When you go over to seven, then you're hitting into your specials rotations differently and your lunch waves and different things. So those impacts ripple in the system as well.
So just to follow up, is there, is there any world where you thought about, is there, like if we went down, it looks like the numbers actually go down at Saks, is there flexibility at Saks to move a grade? I know that's a crazy question, but.
It's, it's not too crazy, because.
Yeah.
Well, what I, I'll tell you this, one of the things we're looking at is, well, hold on. I have a different option, but is, is actually looking at the pre-K. So right now, over at West, the pre-K takes up five classrooms. And if we, we've looked at Saks, but we're also looking, truth be told, at the high school. Say, is there a wing that has an outside access in the back with, say, five classrooms, six rooms, that we could cordon off and use those classrooms temporarily as a pre-K to free up some space over at West? Not ideal at all, but I think that Saks would be tougher, because of the way they use those spaces and the teaming model and, you know, sort of the way that all flows. But having been a high school principal for a decade, you can solve it there.
Yeah.
And so, I, again, that's not at all what I, what I recommend, but it's just one of, just, we've done everything from that, to talk to St. A's, to talk to the town, the congressional church, otherwise, you know, we're reaching out across the board to see are there opportunities to do something with our pre-K, if we have to, to try to free up some space. Saks, probably not the spa, not the place.
Right, right.
But there could be other options.
Okay. Good segue, my last question, which is, is there still way more demand for pre-K than we actually have space for? And are we still hearing that parents are having a hard time actually finding a place to bring their kids for pre-K?
I'll turn that over to Bill.
We have a significant number of, of parents on a waiting list for next school year, which is a good thing. I don't, I'm not sure about the community at large, but I know that, you know, we have a significant number on our waiting list.
I would just add, I would just add that we know that, based on data that we have to send to the state for our current kindergarten class, the current kindergarten class documents 40 different preschool or daycare programs that our kids come from. So there are 13 preschools in New Canaan, and then everything outside of that is outside of New Canaan. So could be somebody's working in Wilton, and they're bringing their child to daycare in Wilton, or they're bringing them in Stanford. So we, it's hard for us to track where all of the students are coming. So that's why when we begin our registration for kindergarten, we begin with our current community right here in New Canaan. We outreach to all the parents within the community, and then we continue to reach out to all those preschool directors. They're currently trying to get us numbers and, and work with us as best as they can. Today, we started the ad in the New Canaan night. So now that's where families will say, oh, I'm going to register my child, but my, didn't know about that, because I don't have my child here in one of the preschools in New Canaan. So we're just trying to do the outreach as much as possible.
So looking at the Saks numbers, I'm actually, I'm kind of surprised that the drop from elementary to Saks is so large, and it seems to be getting larger with every year. It looks like in 2027, correct me if I'm wrong, but it shows a drop of 423 students? Is that?
In grades four through, or five through eight?
So if you take the elementary actual numbers, and then you compare them to the Saks actual numbers, we do lose a lot of students each year going into Saks.
Which page do you want, Julie? Oh, in, in Darlene's presentation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, 1617.
I would, I think what's really important to, I think what's important to also look at is this, the number of students that are graduating from fourth grade going into Saks. So we also need to remember, we reduced two sections at Saks in fifth grade. My guess is next year, we're going to still stay with that reduction of two fifth-grade classrooms. When you look at those numbers of fourth graders going back into Saks for next year, it's not going to warrant us to bounce back up to the 16 sections, we're going to remain at that 14. So I think you have to kind of look at the cohorts of kids as they're entering into Saks, and look at the size of the elementary schools and how they're moving forward. So we have some smaller classes, class cohorts that are moving from fourth to fifth, and that's happened these last couple of years. So that could be a reason as we see those Saks numbers drop.
Okay. And just another completely out-of-the-box idea to throw out there, and I, I mean, I know there are going to be a million issues with this, but just trying to think outside of the box. 220 Elm, if we moved admin, launch, and all of that to Saks and opened up that building, could we do like a kindergarten pre-K building?
It would be very challenging for, for a couple of reasons. First, the busing alone would be very difficult. Start times, but even where, you know, the buses and where they'd stage and how that would work. It's really not, it's not zoned for that, and there are offices above.
Yeah.
Right, so you've got a few different companies that are running their office space above. So I think that, I think that would be very challenging. Plus, I don't know where we'd go over at Saks. But the, you know, and it's about 10,000 square feet on the floor, so that, while it might sound like a lot, we really wouldn't pick up enough probably to make all of that worthwhile. Down the line, as you know, that, that is part of the plan, right? Of, if the whole sort of strategic thing comes together, it is to move us out of there and move us to Saks and, and do some other things. But those, there's some dominos that have to fall prior to being able to make that move.
I also want to point out that pre-K and kindergarten, they need to have that outside area. And so it would be blacktop, and it would be parking lot. So you have to kind of think about office space, and maybe there's empty office space, but is that really where you want to put preschoolers, because there's no playground? So we have to really take that into consideration when we're looking for space to move preschoolers.
If, if we found a, another spot for the pre-K, and let's say these numbers are accurate, there'd obviously have to be some redistricting of some sort, I would imagine. But is there enough space at West if we were to redistrict, if we were to get an extra hundred kids?
If these numbers were accurate.
Yeah.
For only, for, it would buy us a couple of years, but you'd still would wind up being, because it's five classrooms, at max, five classrooms gets you 100 kids, right? So if you're 20 in, in those grade levels. So you, it'd buy you some time, but it wouldn't solve the larger problem, not, larger question and problem of the space. Plus, you know, with pre-K, you really, you want to be in space that's designed for pre-K, if you can, or certainly a school, if not. So if we had to, if we moved them out temporarily somewhere else, we'd want to always be thinking about what is the long-term plan to design space that's, you know, for them? And is everything from the bathrooms and the classrooms, the size of the rooms, the, you know, new school districts that are putting in pre-K wings and areas are doing things like heating the floors and designing the rooms specifically for, you know, three, four, and five-year-olds. So, and plus, the, the kids in our pre-K do have, half the kids have pretty significant needs in special education. So you also have those related services with the OTPT speech and everything else that works there, too. So there's a bit more to it. But I think it would be, it would help a lot, because it would buy, it would kind of help us, give us a little more runway, so that we could see what those trends are doing and if, where, where we're going with it.
And then, like, let's say they did make it out of Saks, looks like Saks and the high school still have space, we're not, it's, they're not as constrained right now as, as the elementary schools.
That's right.
Would they be able to support, like, once these kids graduated from fourth grade?
Yeah.
Would, like, what would it look like at Saks? And is there enough space if this 130 kids ends up going through to Saks?
Yeah, and actually, again, you have 130, but then you go 100, 100, right? So you're, you're growing. We do, we anticipate now, looking at Saks and looking at these, even these numbers, both Saks and the high school, could, could flex to make that work. We do. The high school, by nature of the scheduling, right, so you are, unlike an elementary school where the classes are self-contained, a teacher and 16 to 20 kids, and they're in that room, in the high school, kids are moving in, in the way the scheduling works. So I think we could flex the high school, could flex 17, 1800, I think is the number I saw, and Saks could also flex to about 1600 pretty comfortably, and then, you know, we'd see. Again, if we were to do something with the fifth grade moving out, then, and then doing some renovation around preschool for that lower division where sixth grade is now, we might get into a conversation about, do we leave a couple of classrooms as classroom spaces for flex if we need it down the line or not? And that would be a decision we can make at the time.
And then along the lines of what Julie's question, I think you're maybe alluding to, maybe not, just as far as when kids go to Saks, I mean, I just know, because now I might, I have a daughter at Saks, and we've kind of heard stories that, like, a lot of kids will end up, parents will end up sending their kids to private school, either in fifth grade or sixth grade. Sometimes they'll come back to the high school after going to private school for a few years. Like, can you speak to that? Is that, like, do we know why that happens? Is that an actual thing, or is that, I don't, is that, I don't know if that, Julie, that was kind of what you were suggesting, but that's always been a question of mine, like, if.
Well, and you do, you see the trend, so if you go to page two again, of the NASDAQ projections, that's your historical. You can pick a grade, so we'll just go across the top row, right? So that's the 2015, 16 school year. Start at fourth grade, so they were at 336 when they were in fourth grade. And then the next year, they dropped to 331. So they went down five students when they went into fifth grade in 2016, 17. If you go to the fourth grade in 2016, 17, you're at 356, and then that drops down to 341 there. So we do see, it's one of the few grades across the K-12 where you see more out migration than in migration. We do track, you know, where those students go. We do also though see, well, we see, generally, we've picked up, for the most part, going from eighth to ninth. So again, in that eighth grade in 15, 16 goes from 306 to 312 the next year, 374 to 378. But then the next year was 302 to 294, so it's not.
Consistent.
Right, and so it looks at those trends. But that's, to me, as a, when you're looking at these charts, that's some of the power of these data, that you can, you can see these trends. And the way the projections generally work is, is really, they're creating a factor from each grade to grade, looking back three and five years, and it's that factor, whether it's above or below one, that determines, based on historical experience. So, you know, they're, they're not really taking into account new housing starts or, you know, other, other pieces of data that we know by being on the ground, living here, but they, they're really doing this from afar, just looking at the numbers, running them out.
I mean, the numbers don't seem to be huge, though. Is there anything that would jump out at you guys, like, as far as that fourth to fifth grade, that would be like cause for concern?
We haven't had cause for concern. I mean, it's something that we do look at, and when somebody pulls a child out of the school for any reason, we ask them why, and that will track. So we do keep track of, are they homeschooling, are they moving, are they going to a different school, are they going to a private school? So we do, we do keep that. You know, it's probably, it's more anecdotal, probably than, than anything. Really looking at, across the numbers, you're talking about 4,000 students, and there's five or seven here or there that do those things. But we also want to make sure that, you know, people know how good our schools are and want to keep them in, you know, as they come through.
I mean, the, these numbers suggest that the whole Saks kids, you know, families leaving Saks, that story is completely overblown.
Yeah.
Like, completely. 336 to 331, 356, 341. If you go down that column, it's, it's like.
They're not big numbers.
Nothing burger.
Yeah, they're not big numbers, yeah. I thought they were.
Not at all.
They'd be bigger.
It's wild.
Any other questions? Yeah, Erica.
Darlene, so one of the packets was the school-by-school projections, which had broken out by elementary. And I was looking at page four of that, and between the historical and the projected for each of the elementaries, it looks like from this year, 25, 26, to next year, 26, 27, that we have a breakdown of approximately how many kids by school will land in our elementaries. And I was wondering if that is, because these are still the projections, it, does that mean that we have live births by elementary zoning, and that allows us to then project by elementary zoning how many kids we're actually expecting in that kindergarten class? Is it that precise?
No, it's by ta, by the total number of live births in the town. It's not broken out by.
Okay.
They're similarly looking at the historical trends for each of the schools and building their model off of that.
Okay, so it's not the breakdown specifically of live births?
It'd be so helpful if it was.
That's why I was curious. But nonetheless, even if it is based on the projections, it looks like, you know, taking West, for example, which is at 565 for this year, it's going to be, the projection calls for 622, which is 57 additional students, which I believe means three additional classrooms. So Dr. Lutze, as you were saying, that we're already at 30, which is two above what is ideal for East School, and we've already repurposed, to Brendan's point, two of our specials rooms, a science room and an, and a music room. I, I would think that if we have to find three more rooms, we're, we're at a great risk of running into issues with then parity between what's happening at East and what's happening at other schools. Because the program, if you have to move art to a cart at East, and maybe you don't have to do that at West, now we're, we're running into issues with how we're able to deliver our programs across the schools. Is that, is that fair? And is that, I mean, this, this seems like an 10-month-away problem. Like, I mean, I know we're talking about like longer term, like, is, this seems like this is, there's a shorter-term issue that we're, we're really looking at that needs to be addressed.
That is, that is fair and accurate, and it is something that we have been discussing. That's why, again, there's a second demographer doing some work for us to look at some assumptions and get a sense of things. But if this, if these were to materialize, right, we would be over the 28 sections across the board, and you're right, higher over at East, which is, you know, back to the question, we'd have to really look at the attendance zones as well, maybe make some hard decisions around that, too.
Which, which is another way of saying that we may need to be considering redistricting in this calendar year for next August.
Yes?
Laura.
Thank you.
Laura.
Thank you. I just have a quick, a couple of questions about, I don't know what packet this is, the, the main packet, page 18. When you're looking specifically at the kindergarten projections, I'm wondering, how often do we get this Nezdek report? Because it, over the last four years, for kindergarten specific, they're about 8% off. And it varies widely, like, two years ago, they were, we were down 26, and last year, we were up 23. How often is this, when we're looking at this data here, is this projected out? Like, does that make, does my question make sense? Annually? Okay, so, um, I guess for kindergarten, it doesn't seem to be all that accurate.
No, but it is for K through four.
Okay.
But if you look over time, right, so over those 10 years, when you look at those, those, are you looking at that one slide?
Yeah, right.
So over those, what happens is, so just like this year, they recalc that birth-to-K ratio, and they increase the ratio a little bit because their projections were low. So it's sort of, it works hard to try to self-correct each year. So over the 10-year span through self-correct, you're right, in any one, one year, there was some swing, and as much as 20% in one, one of those years. But over the span of the 10 years, they're within 30-some-odd students, right? They're like 98.8% accurate of the total.
Right.
Throughout those years.
No, the total is very accurate, we're just, the, the last couple of years specifically for kindergarten, we've had a pretty, I mean, 8% about.
Can I just add that they've also said every year in, in their report that kindergarten enrollment is the most difficult to project. They say it all, all across every report that they do every year.
Yeah.
Because they're only basing it on live births. And we've seen the comparison between the live births and then the actual enrollment, so it's tricky.
Well, and, I mean, parents have the, that's the widest range where they have the choice of whether to enroll or not, and all of that stuff. And we have to deal with students when they enroll, and.
Right, and Darlene did mention.
I was late enrolling my kindergartner this year, I know that, because the registrar was on me.
Well, and just for what it's worth, that, and thank you for doing that.
It's a register.
There's two years ago, they changed the age of eligibility, or, you know, as Darlene mentioned. So that could also have contributed to some of the variability in those numbers over the last couple of years, right? This year and last year.
And then kind of more logistical questions or procedural question. It is looking like we're going to have to figure out a, a new solution for East, because we're already maxed out there. How, like, what is the procedure for redistricting in our district? Like, how long does that take, and what does that look like?
Well, ideally, it's a couple of years with lots and lots of people involved. But the needs of the moment are going to drive the timeline, right, as we look at it. It is one of the challenges with these, these types of data, that whether you think it's going to happen or you don't think it's going to happen, you can, there can be confirmation bias of either one, right, as you look at it. So for us, we, we need to just continue moving forward and at least plan around those. And another plan could be temporary portable somewhere, right? If we, because those are things that we could perhaps queue up and be ready to go, and, and drop in a relatively short period of time to cover for a year to try to buy more time. So we really, so for the board, when we get into, involved into November and even into December, we'll be hosting some workshops, getting together and really talking through, what are some scenarios? What are some possibilities? What do we know? What are we expecting? What are we seeing? And we'll be able to pull information also from our surrounding towns. I, I spoke with the superintendents in the surrounding towns just today, but they really haven't, they haven't looked at their numbers quite yet. Like, they're still, their numbers are still coming in for their projections. So once they do, it might help us as well to see what their trends are, are doing. Because I don't, you know, while Southern Fairfield County tends to run differently than the rest of the world, we also run similar to each other in a lot of these things. So that might be informative as well.
And then, when looking at temporary classrooms, is there an issue? Like, that's, there's obviously classrooms, and then there's specialist classrooms, and then there's the general facilities that everyone fills. Can we, if we have temporarys, we have to go over, can we still, does the cafeteria accommodate? Does the gym accommodate? Like, how does that work?
Those are, those are good, the right questions and good questions. It all depends on the numbers, right? The numbers of kids and sections and how we do it. I will say that when we started to look at the, expanding the existing footprint at, at the schools, at the three existing elementary schools based on numbers similar to this, the playgrounds, the parking, the cafeteria, the kitchens, the libraries, the gyms, all of those were insufficient to just, to add classrooms and keep the spaces the same, which is part of why we started talking about different options and scenarios around that. So again, it's, one of the advantages is it's not all at once, right? It's in kindergarten, and then it would be K1, and then it'd be K12, 12, as the, if these projections come to pass and things go that way. So we'll have some time to build into whatever solution it is. But really, again, these numbers in those schools, all of those spaces become inadequate.
Thank you.
So, couple of questions. The, this, this chart, the accuracy, the 1% accuracy, do we have the 10-year-out accuracy of the projections? And I know, obviously, COVID threw a wrench in everything, but this is the prior year accuracy, right? So 2024 to 2025, 2023 to 2024. And the variance is, is more like actually, closer to 10% than it is 1%, even though it's self-correcting, right, as it goes along. But where I'm getting to is, we're projected to add 1,000 students over the next 10 years, right? But given that these are 10, you know, average of 10% variance on a year-to-year basis, what is the, what is the accuracy of the model five, six, seven, 10 years out? In terms of whether or not we, this 5,000 is actually a true, I know it's a projection, right? So I get it. But as in, it's, it's barely, it's kind of accurate. It's 10% accurate with each year, right, on average? 10, 10 years out, it's going to not be as accurate, right? I understand.
Well, yeah, the question is, so what, if you look, again, look at just the 10-year out. We haven't done that analysis because the, the variability is too great, right? And they'll tell you, those are kids that aren't born yet, coming in the kindergarten to couples who maybe haven't even met yet.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So they don't, they, you don't want to do that. You could look three years, and we didn't do that yet.
But at the same time, we're, we're looking at data that's 10, 10 years out, to your point, right? So it's being presented as material, even though it may not be anywhere in the ballpark of.
Right, and really, if they get the kindergarten number correct on year one, when, as they go through,
Then it's.
Then we're, once they're in the schools, we're really, that's the 99.5 accuracy.
Totally.
One through 12. We nail it.
Absolutely.
But it really is what happens in K.
Absolutely.
That matters, and it's the hardest to do. So it's, but that's why we thought this could be helpful, just to get a sense, because it's, again, we haven't been in this scenario before. And it's always challenging when you're a brand-new scenario with the pandemic and otherwise. But the projections have been, you know, on the whole, if you look 10 years, it's been within, you know, that 98, 99% just the kindergarten numbers. So it's helpful, just even if so, if we miss, let's say we missed the 417, and we're right where we are this year, right? Then there probably is going to be some kind of a correction the following year that might be well above whatever the Nezdek projections come in at because of what it'll do to the birth-to-K factor and how that, how that stuff flows. So it's just, again, just another data point around that. I'd be happy to pull the 10-year piece, but I do think it would be.
Or even five years.
It'd be, I, I would say, if we're going to do that, we should look at three. Because those kids are born, right? So you're, at least you're projecting from.
A real, a real number.
Somewhat, it'll still adjust, but.
You can pull the analytics from Tinder.
I was, I was going to make a joke. You beat me to it, but yeah. But the, the reason why I ask, right, and it's not to point out a potential flaw, whatever, in the data, it's, it's if we're being expected to make, you know, perhaps 50-year bond decisions, right? And, and larger capital investments over, that'll go to last, you know, a long time. It's knowing if this five is a kind of accurate five, or even four years out, right? Because it's, it just seems improbable, given what we've, obviously, what's been happening the last 10 years, but I understand there's been a change, but even that is a, it's a 25% jump in 10 years, seems high, right? Does seem pretty high, just given how things have been going.
Agreed.
So just knowing if we can even trust the 2020, you know, 2031 school year number, right? Would be good to know, right? Sure, absolutely, you know, just as far as options, that should be on the table.
Well, and as Darlene mentioned, we have these projections, things going back, you know, 15, 20 years, so. And that's one of the advantages to being consistent with Nezdek. They, it's October 1 every time, it's, you know, it's a similar formula that they use. So, you know, if something like that's helpful, we can generate some of these.
I'm curious.
Yeah.
I mean, again, because, yes, they, they correct themselves, but there is some fairly large variance, given the denominators, right? So over three years, a 10% change, you know, 10% variance compounds one way or the other, even if, you know, may correct, but like, I'm just thinking, like, that's, that's ultimately what we're discussing here, right? We're all beating around the bush, but we have to figure out what we're going to do about this situation, and if there is a situation, right? So knowing if there's actually, how big the situation is and what the right remedies for that would be, even three years out, was probably the right call.
Gosh, I wish I could predict live births.
Any other questions?
One quick one. Any update from Hartford regarding the kindergarten cutoff deadline? They changed it to feel sort of temporary? Have you heard any whispers about that, keeping that permanent, or what's, anything going on?
Yeah, the, the conversation that we've heard is, and it's still very preliminary, don't know how it's all going to fall, but the, the conversation's not about changing that date. That September date, I think, is going to stay as the cutoff for eligibility for kindergarten. It's discussing the waiver process, whether or not there should be one. There's a contingent that doesn't believe there should be, that if it's September 1, then kids should come, and if not, you shouldn't. And there's others that think there should be. So that, that conversation continues. Yeah, and so we are still, we're doing what we've been doing for the last couple of years, where if folks are, if they're born after September 1, but feel like their child should come to K, then we have, we meet with them, we have them come in, we go through the, the age milestones with them, and then help them to make as informed a decision as possible. Ultimately, it's theirs.
Great, anything else? Awesome, thanks, Darlene, appreciate it. All right, next, comments from the public. And announcements in future business, please.
Yes, so our next meeting will be November 17. At that meeting, we'll be swearing in our new board members, we'll have the Board of Ed election of officers. We have invited, Studio Jade is the group that's been doing a comprehensive facility analysis for us. They've looked at all five schools and focused quite a bit on the elementary as well, but really, they've looked at all five. So we'll be able to take their report and results and put together a 10-year capital improvement plan, both sort of safety, health, life safety, plus mechanicals and other things that we need. So we've, we've done this in the past, it's very informative, it helps us. Plus, I think it's helpful in the conversation that we are sort of warming up for here tonight. If we did nothing, what are those, the costs it'll take to maintain our buildings? And then if we're going to do something else, then there's really, it's that delta is part of the conversation between what your just carryforward is versus what your improvement costs are, which would also cover whatever the carryforward was. We do have to keep in the conversation, keep, at least remember, you know, our built, South is celebrating its 75th anniversary, which is wonderful in so many ways, and it's 75 years old, right? So that, our other buildings aren't that much younger. You know, they were built in the 60s, I believe, 62, whatever, wherever it was over at East and West. So that's part of the conversation as well, sort of what, and how education has changed, how needs have changed, how staffing has changed, how the student experience has changed from 1950 to now. So, so that'll all be part of the conversation, and they'll talk about those facilities when they come. They've done a very nice job, very detailed and precise, and worked very closely with our facilities crew. And then, of course, we'll have everyone's favorites, our statement of accounts. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Make a motion to adjourn, please. Laura, second, Brendan, all in favor? Excellent, have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.